Ready board to order a tenant's license for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution, and to the principle of the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I was looking that way.
That's where we are. On the public's.
Yep.
All right. How the patriots will. Well, we know it's not right.
And the eagle's facing us today now.
I don't know, maybe. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, May sixteen, two thousand twenty-four, August fifteen, September nineteen, and October third, and we're going to defer those to our next meeting, hopefully they'll be ready for distribution and review. First item on the agenda beyond that would be a public hearing for Lunar Realty LLC, Northeast Great Dane, twenty dash one dash thirty-three point one. We have an application for amended site plan for a truck repair and sales facility on eleven point six acres along New York State Route ninety-four, Randall Street in the CO Zone with an AQ three floodplain and pondings overlays. Do we have anyone from the public here in our audience for this project?
There's, there's one gentleman here, but he left.
He's not to mention that one.
I guess he's in favor of it.
Okay. Brad, if you would introduce yourself for the record and give a brief presentation?
Certainly. Good evening, I'm Brad Cleverly, NJAS Engineering. I'm the engineer for the project. We had an associate, a project which was from the same owners directly adjacent to this project. This is in the Village of Florida. We are here this evening to deal with this lot, which is in Town of Goshen. For this adjoining lot in the Village of Florida, we did a re-subdivision and went from three lots to two lots, and then there is an easement to access this Town of Goshen lot which goes through the Village of Florida. So that was approved by the Village of Florida Planning Board, I think it was in March, and one of the requirements of the Village of Florida approval is that this Town of Goshen lot disconnect its municipal water connect, municipal water connection in the Village of Florida. So we are here this evening, among other reasons, is that the applicant would like to put a new well for the Great Dane building in the Town of Goshen and then disconnect from the Village of Water, the Village of Florida Water Service, which runs through the Village of Florida to the Town of Goshen. So this is considered an amended site plan. The amended site plan includes the well, there's be some striping of the parking lot and some accessory for the accessible parking, and therein there's, you know, adequate parking for the employees located along here, and that's the, that's the bulk of it.
And it was confirmed that the well did not need to go to the county for review, correct?
That's correct. It requires, under the threshold for going to the Health Department for approval.
Very good. Thanks, Brad. Before I open it up to the public, I'll let our consultants speak and the board, if they have any further questions on the application, and then we'll open it up to the public. Sean.
I just have one comment, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder to the board and the applicant that the reason the applicant is here is not the new well or the little bit of paving they're doing. The site has grown since they received their original approval many years ago, and they are here right now to bring the existing site into compliance with what was approved versus what exists right now in the field.
Could you get into it just a little bit about without compliance?
Yeah, primarily it really has just been the expansion of that gravel area and storage area where they store trucks.
Is that a matter of mapping it, or do they have to change anything on site?
There's no changes proposed on site other than what the applicant just described, but it is really a building, building department issue in terms of enforcement, they're in charge of ensuring compliance with the approved site plan, and in this particular case, what they've seen is not match what's in the box.
Thank you. Phil, do you have anything?
I have a couple of questions. Let's see. Just clarify if you would. You seek a waiver from forty-nine parking spaces as stated to be a requirement, but the map states that parking, this parking space requirement is twenty-two.
We have.
Can you clarify that?
Certainly. Based on the area of the building, it comes out to like forty-nine based on the area of the building. However, there's only twenty employees who work here at any one time, and of course, they don't drive multiple vehicles to go to work, and this, the code's kind of based on a square footage of a building. In this case, when they have these trailers in here, the trailers physically take up a significant amount of space, so you can't have forty-nine workers in there working on things. It's limited to twenty, and so we are proposing to have twenties parking spaces, you know, shown here on the drawing, showing here, and we'd like to stripe, I think, seven of them over here where there's pavement, and that would include the accessible parking spaces.
So forty-nine are required, but you're seeking?
Yes.
Twenty-two.
Because there's, there's no one to fill them.
Sean, just, this is actually a question I have for you. Water usage is estimated to be two hundred gallons per day on average. Is that how we, do we usually take average on that?
It's funny, we were just discussing that before the meeting. So in this particular case, what the applicant would do, they would use the published hydraulic loading rates for the type of use, which is based on the number of employees, and it's going to be fifteen gallons per day per employee. They're allowed to reduce it by twenty percent if they have water-saving fixtures, and I presume that that's how you arrived at the two hundred gallons per day, unless you had metered water data. That's actually, yes.
It wasn't metered water.
Yeah, because this is unusual, because, and I think Neil, you had asked them for metered water data and that's how they got to that.
Yeah, we did the very complex calculation of taking the total water over the past year, dividing by the number of days to come up with the gallons per day.
So in this case, it's actual data, not public data.
Okay. So is it average or is it max?
It'd be the average day. If they take the total year and divide it by the number of days, that's the average day.
And now it's by a number of days, working days, not, I don't recall.
We just took the number of days, because we, we took the dates for which they had meter readings and divided by the number of days.
Okay, question. Thank you.
Paragraph five B of the Part Three EAF, the parking area and the well are stated to be located in the Hundred Year Flooding. The impacts are stated to be de minimis, but I didn't see any analysis as to how it included. It's de minimis.
Well, typically, if it's, if the, it's de minimis in the sense that, well, obviously, if a point, employee comes to work and the parking lot's flooded, he's not going to go to work, so there won't be any impact to the, the parking area. And, you know, we also did an analysis of like the floodplain, determined there wasn't going to be any impact to the floodplain or the elevation of the water. So it all came out to really, really, a de minimis impact.
The concern, of course, is, and you don't control this, climate change.
Well, actually.
The increased intensity and frequency of more severe storms.
Well, again, none of this, this room has control over that, so.
It's not a question of control, it's a question of what does that do to your location of the facilities, the well? How does the, if you have a severe water event, storm event, would the well in any way be adversely impacted?
No, the, the wells are required to extend up above flood, flood elevation, which this one would. They would not have any impact to the well.
Going on that topic, Brad, I mean normally, again, this is back on the county, but normally it would be three feet above the Hundred Year Flood elevation. Your detail says it's one foot above.
We'll revise that.
Okay.
That's a typo.
We'll accept that as long as it's changed.
Yes.
Okay. Phil.
I'm, uh, Jeremy? All right. What? I just, maybe Sean, if you could help us clarify, what the impervious surface is now, is that less than what the threshold is for this type of property?
No, the applicant will be seeking a advantage from ZDA, I understand, right?
That's correct, yes.
So, no, AC and AM seeking a balance for that.
So what, what is the limit and what are, what are they at now?
I believe the limit's at seventy, and I believe because of the way your calculation works, where you take the gross area and you deduct where, of course, is westerns and floodplains, they actually are in excess of a hundred percent purpose.
Try getting your head around that one.
So since infinity, you're being straight at a seven percent in that area.
All right, that's all I have.
Yep.
I've got nothing.
I am. In that case, we'll open it up to the public. First off, I need a motion by the board to open the public hearing. Motion. Phil, second by?
Yep.
Neil, all in favor, say aye. All right, against? Okay. Public hearing is open. Anyone from the public that wishes to speak, we would just ask you to introduce yourself, your name, your address, and state your concern or comment for the record. We'll call on you one at a time. Who would like to speak? Does anybody want to comment on this application? Going once. Twice. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the motion.
Diana, second by?
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay. Kelly?
Okay, so I prepared for you a negative declaration which did not make it to distribution, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to review it with you, and I'm going to go one by one through the impacts as we usually do with the Part Two. I promise you it's not long, so I would be reading to you for hours. The first one is impact on land. The environmental assessment form concluded that the proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. This property received site plan approval from the Planning Board in nineteen ninety-eight to operate a truck repair and sales facility. Over time, the use of the property has grown without having received the necessary and required approvals from the town. Therefore, while there is no new construction proposed as part of this application, other than the proposed water supply well and ADA parking improvements, the Planning Board has recognized that there were alterations of the property for the purposes of adding additional parking facilities. However, the action of bringing the existing site into compliance with the Town Code has not resulted in increased erosion from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. Did not involve construction on land where bedrock was exposed or within five feet of the ground surface. The depth of water table was less than three feet or on slopes of fifteen percent or greater, and as a result, no significant adverse impacts to land are anticipated. Impact on surface water. The environmental assessment form concluded that the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the bed or banks of any other water body, and may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site with the proposed action. Per the Department of Environmental Conservation, please general permit for construction activities. Activities below the one acre threshold of disturbance are not required to prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan. The proposed action involves point one acre of disturbance. Additionally, the applicant has demonstrated that the parking area and well are located away from Brown's Creek and the federal wetlands, and therefore will have no impact on those resources. As a result, and assuming no damaged trailers will be stored on site, no significant adverse impacts to surface water are anticipated. Any questions on those two sections? Okay.
Just a question, could you mention as far as the parking?
Yes.
Do we need to define on the maps where the limits of the pavings go up to there?
I think they have already.
I'm not seeing that.
They don't, the surveyor did not really pick up the limits of the asphalt as opposed to the gravel, but I will say that like all this parking here, which is in the accessible, which will be striped, is all paved.
So when we make the modification on the well head, can we delineate the limits of the paving as well, so the building inspector knows exactly how much is being surfaced?
There's nothing, there's no proposed paving as part of this.
How are you striping? You're striping on pavement, aren't you?
Yeah, you are. It's, 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 it kind of goes between gravel and broke, toward the end of it, it's got a little bit broken up into, goes into, into gravel, so it's, I could have a mad surveyor pick it up to the best he could.
Okay, I'm confused. Is that paving or is that not paving?
There is existing paving, yes. Is it, clearly the, what we've shown here is pretty much gravel over here. There's paving in the vicinity over here where the, where the, where the striping will occur.
Can we delineate that?
I'd have, I'd have the surveyor pick it up, yes, I will.
Maybe make it a little clearer for the board.
I, I will have.
We do, we do have it marked on the map, pavement edge approved site plan around the perimeter, but no indication whether that's, the condition of it is sound and where you can stripe it, that's all.
Okay, I get your point. The area I've shown to be striped is clear.
Okay.
Is, is in good shape.
Perfect.
Impact on groundwater. The environmental assessment form concluded that the proposed action may require new water supply wells or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells. The intended water supply includes a new proposed groundwater well. The proposed well will have a water withdrawal of two hundred gallons per day, which is equivalent to a two-bedroom residence, which utilizes two hundred and twenty gallons per day. The applicant will be required to perform well testing in accordance with the town's protocols, see Town Code Sections ninety-seven, twenty-seven C and D and ninety-seven, forty-three B, to confirm the ability to provide adequate water to serve the project.
Do you think, does the town require quality as well as quantity or just quantity?
I think it's just quantity.
It is both, actually, but I just wanted, I don't think that that is accurate. This is a non-residential, so it would not be required to follow the town's protocols, which is a seventy-two hour test.
Right.
I would recommend that the board consider just revising that to the reference, which I'll get Kelly for non-residential, it's a different standard. They would have to do well tests, but it would not be the seventy-two hour well test.
Right.
Unless that's what the board thinks is appropriate and expected.
They just have to demonstrate the.
And Code Section Link. Sean approved that one.
Yeah.
Additionally, as part of the well testing, so then are they not performing monitoring? Okay. So additionally, as part of the well testing, the applicant will be performing monitoring to verify there's no impact to the existing water supply wells in proximity to the proposed project to the satisfaction of the town engineer. As a result, and assuming satisfactory results from the well test, no significant adverse impacts to groundwater are anticipated. Impact on flooding. The environmental assessment.
Let me go back to that one again, sorry.
Yeah?
Sean?
Yes.
We're looking to demonstrate two hundred and twenty gallons per day, right?
No, Kelly, I think you're saying a two-bedroom house would use two hundred and twenty. The applicant's indicated they used it an average day, two hundred gallons.
Okay, two hundred. You're talking a seventh of a gallon per minute.
Yeah, what we like, we do in those cases, Mr. Chairman, is we have them tested five GPM, because that's usually what a pump or a pump plant would do, and then they're on, it's not, that's what those.
That's in the provision to do that, even though they would require two hundredths. Yeah, because if we're asking them to monitor other wells.
Case by case basis, language in the code.
It's not really feasible, as you know, to test at that level, so usually the well probably utilize a five GPM well pump, and that's.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine, yeah, because then there's something to actually measure off-site or.
Correct.
On-site, you know, a seventh of a gallon per minute, you can't measure off-site.
We had just worked with this applicant, we've worked with this engineer in the past, and they utilize five GPM, which is present.
Okay. Okay. Impact on flooding. The environmental assessment form concluded that the proposed action may result in development in a designated floodway, one hundred-year floodplain and five hundred-year floodplain. It further concluded that the proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns and may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding. The proposed well and the parking areas have been located outside of the designated floodway. However, they are located within the one hundred-year and five hundred-year floodplain. With the exception of a small area of asphalt pavement required for accessible parking spaces to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, the parking area consists of pervious surfaces. Additionally, the proposed water supply well is shown to be located along the outside edge of the one hundred-year floodplain, and will have the well casing elevated to at least three vertical feet above the one hundred-year floodplain. As a result, no significant adverse impacts to flooding are anticipated. Any questions?
Yeah, I agree, is that, the flood elevation level in the area where you park the trailers, what's, what's that flood elevation?
I don't recall, I have it on the, I did submit it on the, the format, but I don't recall where it is.
The other reason I'm asking is if it was high enough that it's possibly going to have an impact on the trailers that are stored there temporarily, I'm a little concerned about being pushed downstream or whatever. I think you're probably below that, I just want to confirm that, though.
Also remember, like, those trailers are three feet up off the ground.
So if I had five-foot flood elevation, I might be doing something to it.
I can, I can look at that, but.
If you could just confirm.
They've also, but they've also sat there during, you know, these previous hurricanes and not moved around.
However, we don't know that those ever had a hundred-year floodplain, flood elevation at that spot during any of those storms. So if you could just figure that out, that'd be great.
Certainly, yeah.
Good. Impact on plants and animals. The environmental assessment form concluded that the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government. Information provided by the EAF mapper of the New York State DEC indicates that the upland sandpiper may be present on site. No correspondence has been received from the New York State DEC in connection with this application. Generally, the upland sandpiper is strictly a grassland species, as there are no grasslands on site that are proposed to be disturbed by this application, no adverse impacts on plants or animals are anticipated. However, to avoid any incidental take, the Planning Board will condition any approval of this application upon any DEC recommendations of the street guard. Impact on historic and archaeological resources. The environmental assessment form concluded that the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Registered Historical Places, or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Registered Historical Places. The Planning Board has received correspondence from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation dated August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, which states that, well, it is the opinion of OKRHP that no properties, including archaeological and/or historic resources, listed in or eligible for the New York State and National Registers of Historic Places will be impacted by the project, close quote. Based upon this letter, no significant adverse environmental impacts to these resources are anticipated, one line. Consistency with community plan. The environmental assessment form concluded that the proposed action is inconsistent with the local land use plans for zoning regulations. The board considered that the applicant will be required to apply for variance from the zoning board of appeals from the permitted impervious surface coverage applicable to the proposed action, and if the zoning board of appeals makes a determination to grant the requested variance process, there will be no conflict with the adopted plan or the zoning regulations.
Comments from the board?
Got a motion then to approve the deck as prepared?
Close the motion.
Diana, second by?
I'll second.
Eric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
So next, they have to go to the ZDA, but if they successfully get through the ZDA, the next step for you would be a resolution, so if you'd like, you can authorize the drafting of one, obviously it is all contingent upon.
Could I have said motion?
I'll make the motion.
Marty, second by?
Second.
Eric, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, Kelly, do aye.
Thank you.
Brad, thank you.
Thank you very much, good evening.
You as well. Next item on the agenda is SR ninety-four LLC Solar Project by Star Renewables, twenty dash one dash twenty-one point one two. We have an application for a site plan, a special permit for a solar energy system, and sixty point seven plus or minus acres along Randall Street, New York State Route ninety-four, in the CO Zone with AQ three floodplain pondings and area overlays. Continuance of the review we've been working on in the past. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Olivia Feldman with Lightstar, here to again discuss the State Route ninety-four solar project. This is a community, just a quick refresher, it's a community solar site. It's two point four megawatts proposed. It's going to be a temporary project that's proposed to be decommissioned at the end of its useful life, which will be twenty-five to thirty-five years out. We submitted our initial application back in July of twenty twenty-three. Since then, we've had a lot of great discussions and back and forth, and we've made some modifications to the plans we've requested to minimize any and all impacts to the surrounding communities. At the last meeting, additional noise measurement was requested, so we could have a better sense of what the on-the-ground noise is that we are comparing to in our proposed noise associated with the project. So we provided the results of that noise measurement, and they showed that the natural sound level currently at the site is represented to be forty-nine point five decibels, and then if insects are removed from that, that measurement, then it takes it down to forty-one point five decibels. So the average background level then that we're considering with insects would be forty-nine point five decibels, which is at most three point five decibels less than the maximum that we assume to generate at the property line. The closest inverter to the property line is fifty-three decibels, so without insects, if we take that out of the equation, we would be over ten decibels difference between what we're proposing and what that is considering, but however, it's quite rare for there to be no insect noise and no traffic noise and our equipment to be on all at the same time. That would be during the winter, during the day, when, you know, the days are the shortest anyways. So overall, our initial noise analysis didn't factor in topography or landscaping, so it was a super conservative look at what the noise could be as experienced to the surrounding communities, because it was considering a completely flat site and no vegetation at all. But, you know, we've got some undulations in topography, and we were proposing really robust coniferous vegetative screening along these borders here, and those will help take down some of the noise as well by a factor of about ten decibels is what conifers can drop it by, and it's also a double layer in most areas, in some places even thicker.
Olivia, just a clarification.
Sure.
But that's what, I think he's saying, that is what is, what you're saying is that is what is allowed under the code, but the board is looking at what is the increased, what is the impact from the increased noise?
Is the 49 jumping to 62? Is it jumping up to 69 when you factor in the inverter and the distance to power?
You factor in all of the noise, natural.
As well as what's being imposed upon the property line from your equipment?
Yeah, the noise study, I believe, factored in all, like, the proposed noise coming from the equipment as well as the ambient noise. It was taken into consideration, so it's not considering that the environment would be completely silent. It's a look at what the additional noise that would be added to the area.
I don't know. I'm so confused.
And so that number makes it up to what? It's above 49?
49 is just the natural background noise, roads, the bugs, the everything, the insects. But it's not including your equipment, the equipment, the hum, the inverters, the noise that comes off when the.
Well, that's 53.
But it's 53 at the inverter, correct?
It's 53.
So basically what you're saying is I only add the four.
Four.
That's the number I was looking for.
Okay.
Okay, so we're adding.
I'm sorry, I think I'm a little confused as well.
I thought you were saying that the 53 comes off of the inverter and then it scales down as you get away from it. That's what it sounded like you were describing.
Sorry. 53 is at the property line.
Perfect. Okay.
And that's location three?
From, from the, I don't remember offhand which location that was at.
Table four.
This is a forest.
Was it one behind the residence? What is the location?
It comes from the front yard residence, number four.
Four is the front yard?
Yeah. All the front yard.
So the homeowner who had testified earlier meetings were sort of on the, that side.
Up here.
You wouldn't see as much of a, there aren't inverts close to the property. You wouldn't see as much of an impact.
Correct, yeah.
You have an equipment, had an inverter on the north, right?
There, yeah, there is some equipment proposed up here at the moment, but we show the attenuation as we get close to the property line.
And relative to that property line, do you have any plantings?
So there are some plantings proposed. So relative to the property line here, so there's equipment through here. So there is, that's something that I was potentially going to offer up is, what we could do is add some vegetative shrubbery in this portion here and this portion here to help further dampen noise if that's a requirement, we can add that in.
What kind of shrubbery do you have in mind?
No particular species off the top of my head, but whatever is standard.
Are there some there with the evergreens?
It could be.
It does.
Or should be.
Yeah. Yeah, something that's there.
Tree is not providing much in the way of attenuation.
Okay. Yeah, we could get some evergreen shrubbery in there.
Mr. Chairman, tell them I discussed this when the noise study came in. And what I saw, I think is similar to what the board saw, that the ambient noise is 49.5. There are 53 at the property line, so it's about three. However, when you remove the insects, as would happen like in the winter, you go for either 12 decibels differential. And what we did was, and this is Kelly's idea, unless it's the wrong answer.
Let's go back to where you already said in that section of the law.
Was to add something in here for consideration, it's in bold in town, that would be to incorporate these property lines, some additional vegetation, right? And most of the vegetation was refraining from drilling, so it's not really on that property line and not on the property line by the energy wood. So if you, if you're making a thing of it, it's very, pretty relaxed.
Would match with that, but it's really what you want.
In terms of.
In three seconds. I have to.
Yeah, so we've got some shrubbery in that spot. Because right now, the landscaping is proposed between Thurland Road and the URA.
The board wants to do the next. The board wants to do the next.
Is that the northwest, what, what side of the?
This is northeastern.
To the satisfaction of the, the junior?
No, it's not a resolution condition, Mr. Chairman, so I think you would just put it in here that they're going to mitigate the potential impact by adding additional plantings. You know, evergreen shrubs.
So no particular limits?
Well, they'll come in when you are doing approval, and hopefully they'll have that amended on there to show you where that's, what this would at least get them past this hurdle.
Good.
So I provided to the board a draft negative declaration.
Before you do that, can I just ask you to clarify something?
Sure.
You, you wrote in your August 14, 24 letter that there would be a one-to-one replacement of trees. 331 replaced by 332. Essentially, but you wrote, I believe, in the EAF 5.3, page four, section 3.2.1, that there would be 373 trees. So assuming I'm correct, could you clarify, get that reconciled?
Can you give a little more context, please, about what that sentence was?
Sentence for what?
You said that we mentioned there'd be 373.
That was in section E, EAF 5.3, page four, section 3, 2, 1.
Do you have that segment here? I didn't bring it.
Did you say we were cutting down?
It's a construction adjoining a surface water body, and you say the site design has been updated to include tree plantings within the buffer zone, which brings the total impact to 0.54 acres. Impacts within this buffer include seven utility poles, 315 fence posts, 12,707 square feet of road, 203 racking posts, and 373 trees.
Installation of 373.
It just says and 373 trees.
So that would mean we're installing more.
Yeah.
So I think he said why is it.
We'll have to clarify.
They're interrupting each other with two notes.
Yeah, so that's why I was, John, that's why I was clarifying.
We'll, we'll just have to clarify that we're doing more than.
That was like.
Clean it up.
Yeah, I think it might have just been saying we're beating it, we're taking down 331 and replacing that one.
That was, yeah, probably a typo.
So we could say.
Yeah, that must have been a typo.
We like the typo.
Sorry, just like, I just gave away 15 words.
Yeah, no, we're proposing 332.
What, what, you're proposing how many?
332 planting.
And taking down 331, so the 373 must have been.
So the 373's incorrect. You're not adding more than you required.
We're adding.
Let's be clear on that.
We're adding 332, removing 331, so we're adding one more than.
But the 373 is wrong.
That, that was wrong. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it must have been.
That's how we changed the head back to.
Why, didn't put 373?
You did. You did.
Oh, we have.
It came from there.
It did. So I will change that to 332.
Thank you.
Just to get a language.
Oh, that's right. I'll put that in both locations, if I say 332, I would say a minimum of 332. So I provided a draft negative declaration for your consideration. I know that I received some comments from Phil, which I think they'll go over, but the first one that I've already been forwarding is on the bottom of page one, where I say that they provided a Part III extended EAF. That will also say and correspond as subsequently clarifying the Part III extended EAF. Yes, I see a double percentage sign. That is a typo. And I don't know if anybody had any additional comments. The bold italic on page four under noise, odor, and light will be revised because I put it in there for the planning board to determine any need for mitigation measures. So I will say that there will be landscaping added to the northeastern side.
I have a question on page two. So in impacts on surface water paragraph, the second last sentence talks about that email from February 14. The DCA has permitted construction to service within on your foot, wetland area, adjacent area. You know, they, they've never gotten, although they had time to, more specific correspondence from the DCA. I know that we interpret this to not, I mean, we don't intend to have this get in the way, but if we could change the phrasing to that, just to be consistent with, we know that we got to say the, the DCA has determined that the application is capable of the permanent issuance standards instead of us sort of asserting that it's permitted.
And then if that change, I think the paragraph that says lastly, as a result, assuming compliance with the speed, general permit, and the switch, and also assuming something from the DCA, permission from the DCA. No significant adverse impacts to surface water. I think it should be added in both.
Page three.
Page three.
Second paragraph in the bottom, now can you provide? Second line, your one-to-one replacement ratio. And it's clear, it's clear which, this is one-to-one replacement ratio of trees with six-inch DVI, which greater. It's, it's clear enough that we're getting down to six inches, but not requiring six inches to go back up?
We have to replace them with six inches.
I think that's what's proposed, yeah.
Six inch at.
Behind?
That's, that's the size trees that we're proposing at? 331 of them that big? They're usually not that big when you're. So one-to-one replacement, not necessarily the size of the trees.
Are you proposing that?
I don't think that's a requirement, no. I think that offhand, I think the trees we're proposing are eight foot tall, but that wouldn't.
That wouldn't be six inches.
No, that would be incredibly, that would be a massive undertaking, yeah.
I think it's I. I got that from somewhere in the. With that, not with proposal.
I think it's six inches weight today, but then a comment made at the New York B by Tom Byrne that it's kind of strange that we have a project that's supposed to last about 20 years, 25 years, and the trees will likely go out to be probably hiding by that point in time. Maybe, I realized, maybe the apartment will a little bit easier to hold.
I can respond to that a bit if I may. This is what we provided at the last meeting. This is like a visual rendering to show how the trees will grow up over time. So this, this is the existing conditions. If you're looking down at Thurland Road, which is a view that some folks were concerned about. So this is a pretty grand view of the site here, and you can see this is post-construction. This is one, one year after construction, and you can see the solar panels are in, and then you've got these trees here. They're tall when you're close up, but far away, you can, you can still see the panels certainly. And then we've got the five-year growth shown here, which is nearly covering the panels. And then at 10 years of growth, they're completely screened from that viewpoint. I, I understand it's a temporary project, but they will, they will do their job, I promise.
I understand.
Yeah.
By converting to solar versus fossil fuel, those trees may have a chance to live 50, 75 years, which your EAP may not have considered. And if you only do it, if, if you have totally cleared area that doesn't have wetlands, that has proper soils, then it's probably farmland, so we're going to get a whole new set of questions that you're locating on agricultural land. So there's got to be some balancing.
Send up a two hour. Thank you.
Okay, so when I did this, I actually had to go back into prior submissions based on their, the way that the EAF was submitted. So I can't find it right now, but we can certainly.
To be clear about that.
Yeah, so the town requires a one-to-one replacement ratio of trees. I'll clean that up, so it's trees there.
Yeah, it's one-to-one replacement of trees that were.
That's a lot.
That were moved.
I'm going to say for height and depth, that's the approach, we want to change it to the height. Town requires a one-to-one replacement ratio of trees with.
Minimum height.
So those are height of eight feet.
Minimum height.
Good suggestion, Sean. That's good to see yourself in the front there.
And then at ten years of growth, they're completely screened from that viewpoint. I understand it's a temporary project, but they will, they will do their job, I promise.
I understand. By converting to solar versus fossil fuel, those trees may have a chance to live fifty, seventy-five years with your. EFP may not have considered it. And if you only do it, if you have totally cleared area that doesn't have wetlands, that has proper soils, then it's probably farmland, so we're going to get a whole new set of questions that you're locating on agriculture land, so there's got to be some balancing.
Send out a two hundred. Thank you.
Okay, so when I did this, I actually had to go back into prior submissions based on their, the way that the EAF was submitted. So I can't find it right now, but we can certainly.
I didn't clear up any, any.
Yeah, so the town requires a one-to-one replacement ratio of trees. I'll clean that up, so it's trees that are.
Yeah, it's one replacement of trees that work.
I guess they put height and depth to confirm that. Does it propose we much change into the height?
It turns out.
Town requires a one-to-one replacement ratio of trees with minimum height of eight feet.
Good suggestion, Sean. That's good, because he was helping me find it.
Very good.
I love it.
Page four? Last paragraph? The, since the official file, your first office, A declaration. And the last line, which is assuming compliance with the state is no significant adverse impacts. All right.
Okay, I know this is a long one. I definitely didn't want to read it with all that Latin in there.
Do you need to comment to the board?
It will change the end of the noise section to add the northeastern side additional.
So the additional vegetation. I have motion to approve the deck as modified decision.
We'll post.
Diana, second one?
Post thank you.
Phil, all the papers, yeah?
So the next step would be to authorize the drafting of a resolution.
Could I have said motion? Neil, second one? Marty, all the papers, yeah?
And did you want the plan showing the new vegetation before the resolution?
Don't know that's necessary, it's not a resolution that is being added.
We submitted just a blow-up or a sketch of that, you know, those corners and said this is what we're doing, and the board agrees if we could, you know, assert it into the final plan.
That works.
Would that be an email? It's a minute, but it's no blow up of the area where they're adding additional landscaping, and that, that is factored into the plan to modify to.
You're here for the.
I think that an email is fine. Good suggestion, Sean. Thank you.
When will that be submitted?
I just meant suggest.
I do not know.
If you want to stick dry with.
Yeah, send you, it's trouble. Within a week, it should, should be doable.
Is that a little board? Okay, so we.
Anything else for us to move on?
So our next steps are to send that blown-up area and some shrub detail for that spot. Is there anything else that you all need on our end?
I do, so we have to.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It's, it's all. Yeah, all right, thank you.
I sent the email.
Jeremy had a.
So it's just a.
I mean, I texted him, he didn't give a.
Next item on the agenda is Bachman three-car garage carriage house, thirteen one one dash six point two. You have an application for amended site plan approval for a garage carriage house located on two point oh six five plus or minus acres of Houston Road in Ryu Zone that acute precinct would record overlays. We're here receiving for initial presentation and to begin secret process.
Does not appear that the applicant.
We do not. So we should defer this to a future meeting.
I can say let's defer it to another meeting, and then we can discuss it. Basically, what it is, just in summary, is board recalls, there was a garage that you approved. It was constructed and encroaches into the twenty-five-foot, you know, building buffer, so that requires an amended subdivision plan, or it needs to be relocated. That's where we are.
No motions in.
No. We just recognized that you tried, the applicant is not present.
That is the last item on our agenda. Sean?
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
Go over the next items to be considered on the next meeting?
Sure.
Sean, I have a list of the.
The, what's that, the hard copies? Okay, so there is an issue where two applicants, one a larger project and the other a smaller project, made a lot of submissions today, but your policy in the past has always been hard copied by three to five project managers. I spoke to the chairman before the meeting, and he was inclined to, to list those and will let the applicants know in the future that they need to make those deadlines. So unless the board wants to discuss it, I'll proceed that way.
What are two projects?
So I should say, one is Goryskieski, I think I'm saying it right. That's that gravel parking area that they're cleaning up and enforcement action on. They did some work that required settlement, but they never got. I think they are also in front of justice court for Michigan State. And the other is Liberty Solar, that's the solar facility at the end of Milburn, which is a light star just left. I will email them tomorrow, and I'll tell them in the future, you know, we'll let, but I go this one time. In terms of the other applications, the board's given a public hearing for sixty-nine sided. Bachman, which you just tabled, light star, resolution, Liberty Solar. So I'll be checking out where I'm at with you.
People's ways of saying.
It's kind of. And just to remind you, next meeting is November seventh. You have platform. Yeah.
Man, those were the.
And for comments to the board, concerns, not bad, motion to close the meeting. So wrote, Phil, second by Diana, all the favors, yeah? Have a good night.